All right, welcome. We'll call this meeting to order. If you will, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amy, would you take your roll call, please?
Mrs. Dolby.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Detschel.
Here.
Mr. Heather.
Here.
Mr. T. Sorry.
Here.
All right. We like to start our meetings by reading our mission statement. The Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And we approve our agenda each meeting. I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
And passes five to zero.
All right, so we're going to start with a couple of presentations. One, we want to start with recognizing Denny Hirsch, who is here tonight, and Greg Stanley, who is not here. But Denny and Greg are part of the boosters, and as part of that, they spearheaded a cornerstone reenactment ceremony to commemorate the cornerstone being laid on Corrine Elementary, then Corrine High School. And that event that they put together brought almost 400 people together in the auditorium at Corrine Elementary. It brought a ton of people to just come through the buildings and relive some of their memories from the being in the buildings. We had Maxine Welsh was what, 102?
Please.
How old was Maxine? 100 and...
She was 102.
102, she was there. We had a cheerleader who was wearing her great-grandmother's outfit from the 1940s. There was so much history in that auditorium that day. There was so much pride that was in that auditorium that day, and a lot of that was attributed to what Denny and Greg put together. There was a slideshow of historical things from the time it opened through the '30s. There was a tribute at the end to some of our graduates who served and lost their lives in World War II, as well as Vietnam. And I just think that Denny and Greg deserve a great deal of congratulations and our gratitude for the event that they put together. It was amazing with the band there, the elementary and middle school choir groups, some historical cars, the historical society, flappers were there. I mean, it was an event. And I thank you, Denny, and I know the district thanks you for what you did to put that on. I know it was a ton of work for you and Greg, but it was an extremely successful event and something that I think we, as a community, can be very proud of and are proud that we were a part of. So we have a token of our appreciation for you and for Greg to say thank you. To say thank you for everything you did.
All right, thank you. (applause).
Denny.
If I can just say a word about Denny real quick here. Was that the Friday night?
The Corrine half, Taft game, or the Hamilton, still Taft to me. I went to church in Hamilton, and all my friends went to Hamilton Taft. But anyway, sitting alone there in the cold was Denny. And this guy has done more for Corrine High School with the Alumni Association and basketball leagues and the Corrine chatter before email than anybody. And it's almost like we should rename it Corrine Hirsch High School. But Denny, thank you so much for all you've done for Corrine High School.
Yep, it was a great event. I enjoyed seeing all the history and how hard you guys worked to pull that all together. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for everything, you know, reiterating everything Mr. Yeater said. And it was really great to see the slideshow, the outfits, listen to the Corrine High School Band and the middle school and elementary choir in the auditorium. The sound in there is just phenomenal, and it was packed house. So I thank you also.
So Cardinals.
I don't know if anyone other than Denny could have gotten Colin Kleimer to reenact and act like an architect that day.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. We also have tonight John Graff, who is Superintendent of Butler Tech, who is here to share some updates about Butler Tech and the partnership with the district.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is John Graff. I'm Superintendent/CEO of Butler Tech. It's my pleasure to be here this evening and share a quick update about things that are happening at Butler Tech. Before I do that, I do want to make sure that Northwest Local School District recognizes that the successes that Butler Tech has is an equal success for Northwest Local School District. So we want to make sure that when I'm sharing some of the things that are happening at Butler Tech, inclusive of Northwest Local School District, that we share in that success. So I want to personally thank Mr. Yeater for his hard work and dedication. Our partnership is stronger than ever, and I think that's a result of his leadership, as well as Mr. Detschel, who is the board member who's representing Northwest Local Schools on the Butler Tech Board of Education. So I want to recognize both of those gentlemen and also all of the board members who continue to support the things that are happening on behalf of Butler Tech and Northwest Local School District students. So I'll first start, this is a 19-slide presentation, but it will not take 19 minutes. It will be less than that. I'll do my best to make sure. If you ask me questions, then it could be longer than 19 minutes, but I'm hoping that I'll be around 10 minutes at the most. So October of '22, we opened up a Natural Science Center building on Monroe Local School property. That is our new Natural Science Center. We were in trailers for almost 10 years, and were able to pull off a feat just when the pandemic hit, when the construction period was really exciting and supply chain demand was difficult. We were able to open in October of '22. We have 30 students from Northwest Local School District at this Natural Science Center site. It's a beautiful campus, equine science, veterinary science, and now our new green engineering program, which just launched this year. So we're very excited to share in that. One of the things that we've been talking about is making sure that we're providing students with as many opportunities as possible. I see that in your mission, where Northwest Local Schools talks about creating a responsive learning community where they're challenged and guided along a pathway. That's really what the partnership's about at Butler Tech, is trying to make sure that we provide as many opportunities for our students as possible. So we've added a business program pathway with Cincinnati State that begins in the 10th grade. Students can earn College Credit Plus during that time, as well as an IT pathway for 10th grade students at our Fairfield Township campus. And again, I mentioned the green engineering pathway, all new programs in the '23-'24 school year. In addition, first responders continues to be strong for us. We've added senior programs in firefighter level one and two, emergency medical technicians, as well as expanding our welding technology program, which is our most popular program, having upwards of 140 to 150 applicants. We originally only had 25 spots a year, and we're now up to 56. And with some additional slides that I'll share with you, we'll be expanding even further. One of the beauties that we've been able to have is tremendous support with our community during the ARPA and the pandemic, which I am glad that everybody has gotten through that, and we're past that at this point in time. But one of the things that we were faced with is an opportunity that the Butler County Commissioners awarded $15 million to Butler Tech Board of Education to expand and meet some of those capacity issues that we're facing right now with an increased demand for our students wanting into programs and having to turn away students, which isn't a fun day for us at all. So we're planning to add two more campuses, an advanced manufacturing facility that will be located on Miami University Hamilton's campus. It will be a full integration along with Miami University. We're talking with President Crawford and the Vice President of the Regional Campuses, Dr. Andy Durajay, finalizing those details as we speak right now. It will be located at North Hall, which is on property at Miami University Hamilton. High school students will be accessing college courses. We also have plans to have businesses on location on the property cohabitating the space, which is a change, I know, for a lot of public entities, but something that we foresee in the future that's going to be even more prevalent as the years continue for public education. In addition to that, we're adding an aviation facility. We currently have a location at the Middletown Airport Hook Field. It is a small classroom at this point in time, and we do have some hangar space, but we're adding a 26,000-square-foot facility inclusive of airframe and power. So as well as we have students that do some private pilot license training is there as well, and we'll be adding avionics to that facility as well, inclusive of, currently we have three business partners that have signed MOUs to co-locate in that space as well. Healthcare programming is something that continues to grow for us, our bioscience campus. We have 73 Northwest Local School District students that attend the bioscience campus. We're actually working towards the bioscience center expansion in the hopes that we'll be able to expand that campus, but at the same time, we're working with Cincinnati State to create a full bachelor degree nursing program pathway for high school students beginning in the 11th grade and then matriculating all the way through their Bachelor of Science in Nursing. Cincinnati State was awarded the four-year degree pathway. If you've experienced healthcare, the nursing crisis is real. I have two daughters that are in the healthcare field, and I can attest, when I get the calls in the evening, that they're getting called back into work oftentimes because of the crisis that we're facing. So we're excited about that partnership as it continues as well. I have to make note that none of this would have been possible without the advocacy that we've done with the Butler Tech Board of Education, inclusive of Mr. Detschel. We have been advocating at the state and federal level for a number of years about the desire to expand our programs, the capacity issues that we've had in the most recent years, and it has really proved to be very valuable for us to do so with the $15 million that we've received from the county commissioners. And then in the latest budget, we have seen an opportunity where the state awarded career tech education expansion opportunities of upwards of $200 million statewide. We're unsure at this point in time if Butler Tech is going to be able to tap into those resources, but we are certainly hopeful that we'll be able to do so in the near future. So a couple of things that we're changing in order to expand capacity is that we want to make sure that we have wonderful teachers, which we already have great teachers in the district, at our satellite programs, which we consider Corrine and Northwest High School. But we also know that that crisis is continuing to occur, not only in the academic areas, but especially in the career tech education field. The industry continues to see increased demands to people to get into the field, and then for someone to get into the education field, we're looking to try to be able to change that credentialing process. So somebody who is a welder, who would love to be an instructor, we want to get them on an easier pathway to become a teacher at Butler Tech or at Corrine and Northwest High School. The other thing that became a little bit of an anomaly to us is that so many students are accessing College Credit Plus, but we had no way of high school students accessing our adult education campuses. And so we were able to advocate at the state level. Now they have what's called OTC, Ohio Technical Centers, which is the technical name of our adult education campuses. We have what's called OTC Plus, which now high school students can access our adult education campuses and access those programs at no cost to the school districts. And so the state is picking up the tab, and we plan to expand exponentially at our adult education campuses as well. So the why we're on such an aggressive pace, I think this is very instrumental in identifying that 47% of the jobs and employment could be phased out in the coming years due to technology. And that's from the Ohio Workforce Transformation Board at the Governor's Office. 65% of secondary students are predicted to work in jobs that do not yet exist. And the last one, which is really scary, is that 75% of the companies expected to be listed on the S&amp;P 500 in 2027 have yet to be established. And so when we talk about the need to move faster than the speed of business, this is why we're on such an aggressive pace at Butler Tech and in our partnership at Northwest Local School District. These are the hottest fields in Ohio: aviation, manufacturing, and healthcare and IT. You can see evidently why we're expanding all of those programs with our aviation campus, our advanced manufacturing campus that will be located at Miami University Hamilton, and the desire for us to expand our healthcare programs, not only within your school district, but at our bioscience campus as well. And then the IT field is affecting every industry. If it's food service, if it's customer service, if it's healthcare, if it's manufacturing, any industry, IT is being a major influence in that particular area. This idea came about several years ago about creating a quantum leap. And if you've seen the show Quantum Leap, I know for those of us that are in my age have a little more gray hair or no hair, the show Quantum Leap was about things that happen in the future. This is really trying to build a bridge in what the future of education is going to look like. And what we see is that education, business, government, and the public are going to coexist, collaborate in the same spaces. Students will have internships, work, co-ops at not only where they are learning, but the for-profit businesses will also be located in the same space with them. And so when a student goes down the hallway, are they enrolled at Northwest Local Schools? Are they a Corrine or Northwest High School student? Are they a college student? Are they an intern? Are they doing a co-op? Are they working in the business? The answer is yes to all of that. And so we're really blurring the lines about when and where a student has access to programming, and we want to eliminate all of those barriers that frankly, government and business and regulation has prohibited us from doing so for so many years. So we're excited about this. And the two new campuses that we're developing over the next couple of years, which we hope to open in August of '25, will be the culmination of the hard work that we've put forth in such a number of years. Lastly, this is all to have a sustainable workforce, economic development, to attract businesses, and to meet the current and future needs. If you've not heard, there is a war for talent. I would say that Butler Tech, along with Northwest Local Schools, we're the best weapon for that, to be able to handle and be able to meet the needs of our communities. So we do have to move faster than the speed of business with our senior-only programs, our partnerships with multiple companies, including Procter &amp; Gamble, our Westchester Bioscience Campus, Hook Field, Middletown, and our advanced manufacturing facility as well. So if you've not heard of some of these terms, mechatronics, IOT, the Internet of Things, IT, cybersecurity, additive manufacturing, CNC programming machining, automation of systems, these are the new technologies that are going to be the new job descriptions of the future for our students that are frankly currently in our high schools. Just some particular campus enrollment for Northwest students. And when I say campuses, I'm talking about the bioscience, natural science, our Butler Tech campuses. You can see we have 218 students from Northwest Local Schools accessing one of our Butler Tech campuses, which is really exciting to us and very, very happy that we're able to continue to partner. Satellite enrollment, which is our satellite, meaning Corrine and Northwest High School, inclusive of the middle schools, we break that down by what's called FTEs, full-time equivalents. So when you see 478, it's a little bit misleading because a student can be one-seventh of that particular number because they're only in the classroom period one-seventh in the day. So that can be multiplied, and you can't actually multiply it by seven because not all students are only in there one period a day. There might be multiple students that are in for two periods a day. There might be a student who's taking one or two or three classes. So I can't give you an actual number, but the 478 is a really strong number. And I think frankly, a great advantage for Northwest that we have the Corrine and Northwest programs that we have on your campuses, yet your students can still access the Butler Tech campuses, is a real advantage that a lot, frankly, a lot of our other partner associate school districts just don't have. We have partnerships in Hamilton that can access that, but very few others, and I'm trying to think, I don't believe any other districts in our 11 associate school districts have campuses like the Corrine and Northwest campuses that you have. So we're excited about this kind of disruptive change that we're seeing in education. We look forward to our continued partnership with Northwest Local Schools. You know, we have 26 teachers that, you know, 14 at Corrine, one at Corrine Middle School, nine at Northwest, one at Pleasant Run, and one at White Oak. This partnership, I think, began in 2000. And Mr. Detschel, can you remind me what year that was?
Nine.
Nine, 2009?
Yeah.
She beat you to the punch. It's really a strong partnership, and I think the reason it's a strong partnership is because, one, you have great teachers at your Northwest and Corrine campus that really like to be embedded. Oftentimes, if they wear Butler Tech swag, they're also going to wear Northwest and Corrine swag when it's a Friday night and there's a football game. They like to be embedded in the culture that's happening at the campuses. But at the end of the day, you know, it's about the partnership and doing what's right and best for our students. And so with that being said, for us, it's about helping students find their passion, finding their purpose, and making an impact. And we're just happy and eager and excited for what the future holds for this partnership and for Butler Tech in general. So excited to be here this evening, would be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and again, just want to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the information. And I guess, what are some ways that you guys give back to the districts, or how do you partner with the districts that send their students to Butler Tech?
Yeah, so one of the strongest partnerships, I would say, is our involvement in the business advisory committees. We have a very, very strong business advisory committee. We have almost 250 businesses that are part of it. I know Mr. Yeater has been in attendance before. It helps us connect businesses to our students. And when we talk about inclusive inclusivity of the students, we're not just talking about our campus students that are at the Butler Tech campuses, we're also talking about the Northwest Local School District, inclusive of Corrine High School as well. So that's just one of the ways that we partner. We know that filling the job pipeline and the workforce and the skill set and the credentialing, we pay for all the credentials for students to take those assessments over that period of time. The success rate, we serve over half of the Northwest Local School students that are eligible to take programs with Butler Tech, and so that's a very strong relationship. We've been involved in the Corrine Chamber, involved in that community as well. And, you know, our satellite supervisor and our teachers are involved in the community and likely, you know, sometimes they don't even know that they're a Butler Tech teacher. And, you know, they're going to do work in the community, whether it's community projects or volunteer work. A lot of our teachers who are Butler Tech teachers are really just frankly embedded in the community and giving back.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you for the presentation.
Thanks, Sean.
Sean, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Matt?
All right, for this evening, for the student achievement recognitions, for Monford Heights Elementary's, kudos to Mr. Kenny and the fifth-grade chorus. They are off to a great start this school year. An excellent group of 22 fifth graders are having a great time creating a wonderful sound. They meet every Thursday morning at 8:00 a.m. before school starts. It's not too late to join. If you're interested, talk to Mr. Kenny. Monford Heights Elementary would also like to recognize Ms. Leslie To Hughes and her Musketeer Mentoring Program. Musketeer Mentoring is for fifth-grade students who have a passion for helping others. They will help in a kindergarten, first grade, or second grade classroom, or support during advisory, and as part of their library or technology time to help younger students with math, spelling, reading, writing, and/or classroom projects. At Corrine Elementary, Corrine Elementary recently selected their Cardinal Captains for the '23-'24 school year. These students will represent the voice of the student body. Cardinal Captains will also meet with Superintendent Yeater, as well as Building Administrators, monthly to discuss building and district ideas for improvement. Top-selling PTA Mumkin students were treated with an ice cream social, silly string war with Principal Kleimer, as well as participating in a pie-in-the-face activity where students were given the opportunity to bribe both of our dean of students, Mr. Crisp, as well as Principal Kleimer. At Corrine High School, Corrine Boys Golf Team finished fourth at the sectional at Miami Whitewater behind St. X, Elder, and Talawanda. Alex Diesel, 75, Jackson Lambrenidis, 79, Reed Schaefer, 81, Jack Berger, 85, for a team score of 320. Haley Johnson, first singles player for Corrine Women's Tennis, broke the season wins record at the sectional tournament with three victories over Fairfield, Northwest, and Lakota West. Haley reached 18 wins for the season, beating the 15-win record since 2003. Thank you.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Any other updates for Butler Tech?
No.
Any legislative updates?
Nicole, just one thing. We've been talking about the new Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. Well, guess what? One judge, and I don't know who makes these judges kings, has put an injunction into blocking the actual transfer of power, and actually, it was a magistrate who's not even elected. And so right now, there's some, the governor's proceeding with reorganizing it, but he's not allowed to hire a director, so it's on hold. Ultimately, the Ohio Supreme Court, I would think, would, you know, lift the injunction. But as of now, it's on hold, or at least part of it is.
Report from any employee organizations?
None tonight.
All right, now we have our community comments. Just want to remind everyone that individuals wishing to speak have submitted a request to speak form. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. Public commentary is allowed, but the board will not respond to public comments. And first, we have Taylor Lewis.
Hi. I am coming to the board today at the recommendation of the Ohio House District 29 State Representative Cindy Abrams. Because of an incident that happened September 28th of 2023, because of this event, Superintendent Yeater has permanently banned me from Northwest Local School District property. I have reached out in an email to each of you with no response. I am here tonight because the ban that has been put in place is directly affecting my children's education and also our day-to-day lives. I believe this ban was put in place in haste without all of the information from the event. I believe this because the investigation into the event has not been completed, and I myself was never contacted to have a conversation about the events of that day. This conflict took place off of school property and did not involve any school personnel. While it was a confrontation between two parents who had to pick up their children from Corrine High School, it did not involve the school in any direct way. I believe Yeater's ban was an overreach by the school and that they involved themselves in a manner that didn't concern them. I'd like to give you some information about the altercation to make sure you have all the facts when considering removing a ban. Also, I'd like to stress the difficulty this ban has placed on our family. On September 29th, I was approached while waiting to pick up three children from Corrine High School by another Corrine High School student whose parent had parked behind me in the parking lot of the church next to Corrine High School. When asked to move my vehicle, I told the student that I was waiting for kids to come out, and then as soon as they came out, I would move. I, at this point, could see two of the three kids I was there to pick up coming towards the car. This wasn't suitable to this child, and he began to argue with me. I rolled my window up because I wasn't going to argue with the child, and I was waiting for children. As I waited, the parent of this student proceeded to yell, honk, and curse at me. After a few moments, the person who was parked behind her left this line, and she was able to pull out of her space. But instead of leaving the parking lot, like most parents do, this woman was so upset she decided to pull out from behind me and park her vehicle in front of mine. At this point, I was still waiting for the third child to emerge. However, it had only been three minutes since the altercation with the student at my window. At this point, with this person backing up to block my vehicle, I had retrieved my phone and started filming. As soon as I started filming, the third child entered my vehicle, and I decided, instead of engaging with this parent... of engaging with this parent, that I would drive through the grass and around the vehicle blocking me. When I attempted to do this, the other parent in the vehicle decided to again pull her vehicle in front of mine, not allowing me to leave. And at this point, I started to fear that this woman was going to cause a further confrontation, and that her not allowing us to leave was a threatening behavior, as she had no reason to still be in that parking lot, as she had already received her child. The parent rolled down their window and started screaming again. At this time, I was scared of what this woman would do to escalate the situation further. I feel it is a good time to note that in April, I was attacked by a woman who hit me with a metal baseball bat outside of my home twelve times. I believe this contributed to me being nervous at this woman's demeanor and her escalation tactics. I retrieve my CCW holstered weapon to make it more accessible in the event of a serious altercation, and I placed it in my lap. At this time, the other parent saw my weapon, exited her car, and began banging on my windows. At no point did I roll down my window or exit my vehicle. I unfortunately dropped my phone and wasn't able to continue recording, but you can hear the woman on the recording, recording screaming and banging on the windows. At this point, I fear for my safety and the safety of all of the children in the car with me. However, instead of engaging, I backed up my vehicle, drove around her, exiting the church parking lot. After exiting the parking lot, I realized that this woman was chasing me down Chiviet Road, driving recklessly, weaving in and out of cars, and driving through a turning lane. I decided against driving home and instead drove to my husband's work. This woman followed me there and then sat outside his place of business, parked in the turning lane, waiting on me to leave. Corrin Township was called, and after assessing the scene, sent both parties on their way with directions not to have any contact. Nothing else was ever done. Since the altercation, I've had to obtain a restraining order that has been brought to, and it was brought to my attention by the courts that provided me with that restraining order, thus this woman has extensive criminal background, including armed robbery and drug charges. The events of that day have made my children scared to go to school. I've even had to keep my children home the day after the event. The ban has made it extremely difficult for me to convince my children that they are safe at school. It has also created an unnecessary burden to my family, as I have been with the Northwest Local School District for ten years with no incident. All four of my kids who attend Northwest Local Schools are model students. They are also all on honor roll. Myself and my husband regularly volunteered at the schools and donated to school activities. We have a four-year-old, four-year-old who attends preschool at Houston Elementary, who needs to be picked up and dropped off daily. We have a middle schooler who doesn't receive bus service because we live too close to the school, but would be forced to walk on a road with no sidewalk to get to school if he isn't taken. This is also an issue because my son has mobility issues that hinder his ability to walk for long distances, which is listed in his school's five oh four plan, and also high school student who isn't provided busing of our...
Sorry, I want you to be able to finish, but you're over three minutes, so if you can just wrap it up.
Pretty much, I was given a ban with no information taken from me that was taken on a word of, I don't even know who this woman is harassing me, and I'm the one who's been banned from the property. She has not received a ban at all, and is still, other than the restraining order that I have, capable of going to all of these things. We have thirteen more years of our kids being in the school district, and if this ban stays in place, it's going to be a huge inconvenience for us. We've even considered moving out of the school district because of it. I don't feel like it was put in place for a reason that had anything to do with the school district. And after contacting all of you, him, and the Ohio State Representative, I was told to come to you guys to have you guys overlook at it.
Thank you. We have one more, Ryan Glace.
Hello. At this point in time, I think everybody knows who I am and kind of why I'm here. As I've sat back for the past two months that I've been trying to get this thing figured out, I mean, obviously, wide range of emotions has kind of branched everywhere from just absolute, just kind of rage over the situation to the main one that hits, is still just confusion. And up at that school, schoolhouse talks, Darrell, you and I spoke for a little bit there, and I'm kind of questioning if maybe the issue we're having here is just a lack of understanding of authority, what we're able to do, things of that nature. You know, because I go back to, and I always will go back to, the first day that I showed up here and being told, hey, give me your information, I will handle this. Then the following week, being told, hey, by Mr. McKee over here, I can handle this, but the only way I can is with Mr. Gator's approval. Then talking to people on a state level. This is a local thing, can be handled by the superintendent. What happens if the superintendent refuses? Well, then you go to the board, because the board has authority over top of the superintendent. At least, this is the way it's being explained to me. I don't know. I, I don't claim to be anything more than just a dad and a landscaper, just trying to make it. You know, so, again, I'm going to ask Darrell, I'm going to ask you, and I'm going to ask the rest of the school board. I, I need the help here, and it's one thousand percent within everyone in this room's authority to make it happen. It, it literally is nothing more than, let's make sure kids get to school safely. You know, every morning is, I'm getting reminded more and more as I'm taking my kids in, it's darker and darker. The other day, driving them in while it's pouring down rain, and I'm thinking, I send my kids to walk in this? Ain't no way. And it baffles me that any adult would look at me and ask me to, because it just doesn't, it, it's not appropriate. All adults, especially in a school setting, the children's well-being and their safety, that's number one, has to be. And anyone that doesn't think it's number one, I mean, I, I question the effectiveness of, of being in this room. I mean, that's just how it is. That being said, I will say, over the past two months, I've had more people, both on this board, maybe future board members, community members, things like that, that I've spoken to, and I have been absolutely blown away at the amount of things that people are willing to do to help out a stranger. It, it blows my mind. But then I also sit back at the end of the night as I'm thinking, man, those people are just really stand-up great people that I admire and I think, I think the world of. If you're willing to go through all this, you know, let me get ahold of my friends, let me have this, duh, 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 duh. All we need is, just, okay, put the kids on the bus. I mean, it, it's such a simple fix.
Ryan, what's your address? Where, where?
Twenty-seven oh eight Overdale Drive.
Overdale.
Yep.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, so, moving on to the consent items, we'll start with resources.
We seek your approval for the following: two resignations, one retirement, seven initial appointments, various supplemental items, one job abandonment, and a job description for an OP four here at Central Office.
We have two donations. One, Colrain Women's Club donated books to the Colrain Elementary School Library, and we had Staples donating supplies to Colrain High School. We've got several vendor contracts for non-public schools and some special ed contracts.
From the curriculum department, we're seeking your approval for a Northwest High School music field trip to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame in May of twenty-four. We're also seeking your approval for use of the Sandy Hook Promise resources in order to meet the requirements of the Save Students Act that is in effect this school year.
With that, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion, questions? On how are we, we're doing pretty well on transportation drivers and...
Yeah, knock on wood. We're starting to get more people applying. We did start another person, another driver today, so they, if they have all their credentials, they can come in for a couple days worth of training with our OBIs, and we can get them on a bus and on a route. So, so far, so good. It's improving, and we're getting more applications every week.
Chris, what about the mechanics?
Mechanics, we have hired three, so we've got three in-house mechanics, and we're interviewing for a fourth now. So that would give us a full house on our mechanics.
Great.
So what, so with transportation, we've been doubling up routes, but we haven't canceled any this year?
That's correct.
Great.
So the goal is to get more drivers in, get our supervisors back in the office, and stop doubling routes, so we get our routes back on time.
Thank you.
And can you just talk a little bit about, Brent, about how you select the Sandy Hook, kind of what that's, what that's for?
Sure. So... The Save Students Act is requiring us to provide an hour of education annually for students in grades six through twelve in three different areas. So we're required to look at safety and violence prevention, we're required to look at suicide prevention, and we're required to look at social isolation, it's a hard word. And so, the Sandy Hook Promise, the state put out a number of options for schools to use, and of those options, there were three free resources that were put out because there were no funds associated with materials for this. And so, other school districts, we've been collaborating through the Hamilton County Educational Service Center, and other school districts around us are choosing to use the Sandy Hook resources. Emily Doblinger and our team have really looked closely at them, and we feel like having all three of those requirements met through a common program, and Sandy Hook is the only one that can meet all three requirements. And so, our teachers would only have to interact with one platform in terms of preparing things and consistency of message and access for people who are interested in seeing what we're actually going to be introducing to students. I think it's also important to share that parents have the option to opt out of any or all of that requirement, because they may disagree or they may not want us to be the ones introducing it to their children. So, all of that will be coming out to parents once, now that we have your approval, we can move forward with that.
Thank you for walking through that. Appreciate it. Pass this five to zero? Thank you. Amy?
Good evening. First, I'd like to ask the board to dispense with reading of the special work session minutes on September twenty-first and the regular meeting minutes from September twenty-fifth. We also need to increase our cash fund for Corrin High School Athletics from a thousand dollars to two thousand dollars, so that they can prepare for the House Bill thirty-three requirement to accept cash at the gates. With that, I ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
Motion, a second?
So moved.
Second.
Amy, I'm sorry.
You're good. Any discussion?
Yeah, Amy, when does the cash, is that the fifteenth of October?
October third.
Oh, October. Because I know up at Hamilton, it did say cash. I thought it was the fifteenth, so that's good, because, boy, somebody computer challenged like me trying to order online like in the South, that was an adventure. So, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Amy? Pass this five to zero. Thank you, Amy.
Then, I want to circle back to transportation, because although it's really good news that we haven't canceled routes, the doubling routes creates some elongated routes in times for people. But I do want to call out that, from a transportation perspective, we've had forty-one of our transportation employees who have five consecutive weeks of perfect attendance, and we have twelve other transportation employees who have four or five weeks with perfect attendance. So, even though they're doubling routes and they're still kind of going through that kind of transition, our drivers and our staff have really stepped up, and so that is also another tribute to why we're not canceling routes, because they're showing up and they're, they're getting the work done, so we appreciate that, and I just wanted to call that out for that department. And then, the other thing, I just want to call out the Corrin Give Back Day that happened on Saturday. It's a great event that Corrin does with people working cooperatively to really give back to the community and help out, and we had a group of staff members from Pleasant Run Elementary, a group from our Central Office, we had our Corrin High School wrestlers, and our baseball team, and Ms. Tolby was there, and we had a good showing to kind of be there to help support the community and help other people in need. So, that was a really good day, and I was glad to see so many of our people there helping out. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member comments?
Um, I missed, earlier mentioned Denny for all you've done, but Denny, I should have mentioned, even though I didn't see him at the game Friday, your lieutenant, Mr. Stanley. Greg is, I mean, very close second to Denny in terms of keeping the boosters and Corrin High School Athletics together. I don't know the exact details, but Greg did tell me that in early March, there's going to be a one-hundredth Colrain anniversary kind of formal dinner. I believe Kerry Combs, I'm not sure that he's the speaker, but I, I've heard he might be. It's going to be a very nice sit-down dinner, if it happens, and I, there's no, no stag this year, according to what Greg told me. So, I wanted to give some kudos to Greg for all he's done, and these guys don't get paid to do this. I mean, they put in so many hours of time, and the thing that I forgot to mention, too, about you, Denny, was all of the team photos in the back hall at Corrin High School. This man did that, and if you walk in the back hall, you'll see teams from, what year did they start?
Nineteen twenty-five.
Nineteen twenty-five. But I'm a little bit concerned about these anniversary years. I was at Colrain on the fiftieth anniversary year, and the football team went oh and ten, and now we're at the hundredth anniversary, and we play the number four team in the state this Friday night. And so, it'll be up to beating Fairfield, that last game at Fairfield, and...
It's only up from here if it's ever fifty years.
It can only go up, but there's something about fifty, I don't want to be around for the hundred and fifty. So, anyway, thanks to both of you guys, and that's it, thank you.
Matt? Oh, whoops, sorry.
Nice, wanted, kudos to Denny, and really appreciate all the time you put into Colrain. I mean, if we had to pay you hourly, I don't know how much money you'd have, but you'd have a bunch. But really appreciate your time and your effort. And John, I want to thank you for the Butler Tech presentation. Just goes to show that there's a lot out there for kids, and they have a lot of choices other than that, and see if we can get Colrain a win on Friday night.
All right. Matt?
I'd like to give congratulations to the Northwest Knights Football Team on their win on their homecoming game on Friday night. It was theirs, you know, great to see them come, come away victorious, especially since we have a new football coach that we just promoted in August, I believe. So, right at the, you know, beginning of the season is when they started with a new football coach. So, it was his first win as a coach, their first win as a team this season, and that was great to see. Another great part of the evening that I, you know, had the opportunity to witness, being homecoming night, the marching band decided to give their marching band performance after the game. So, any of the fans that wanted to hang around after and, and watch them compete or perform their competition performance in practice for competition was able to do so. One of the coolest things was, the football team, after just winning, you know, didn't run to the locker room, they were hanging out on the sidelines and were watching and cheering on their, you know, fellow schoolmates on the marching band perform. So, there, congratulations.
Thanks.
Denny, appreciate you coming this evening and getting recognized, you and Greg. John, thanks for coming. How you excel some of our kids. I have a lot of friends that their kids have gone through the program, and, and these kids are really, they're rocking it in, in, in the work world, so genuinely appreciate. That's it.
All right. I just want to remind everyone that we have the school talks, the schoolhouse talks going on. We've had the first one and several others, those are on our website and...
Next one is Thursday night at Cancun.
Yep, okay. And so, encourage people to come out to those, and just, again, congratulate Northwest, and both homecoming parades were awesome to see how many kids and staff members we had in there. And just thank Mr. Hirsch and Mr. Stanley for their work, and the community members that came and spoke tonight, thank you for continuing to be here, and that's all I have. Thank you.
And next, the board, we'll go into executive session for details related to security arrangements and emergency response protocols, where disclosure of the matters discussed could reasonably be expected to jeopardize security of the board, to consider employment and discipline of a public employee, and to consider matters that are required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations of state statutes. With that, the superintendent recommends the board approve the motion to move into executive session as listed.
So you need a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Right, that passes five to zero. I just want to remind everyone that when we go to executive session, when we return, it will be just to adjourn the meeting and that no further business will be handled in the meeting. Thank you.